All right. Are you ready to go? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
It's more common than ever.
And I will call the meeting to order. We have, we are going to remove item three C from the agenda. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jorgensen, second by Shay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Discussion and/or decision on disaster recovery response, since we're still acting in recovery mode from the tornadoic events from April 26th. I'm going to leave this on the agenda for the entire month until the proclamation ends, just so we have a chance to address any outstanding issues. We can respond as we need to. And any department head is eligible to give an update if there's some, some concern that they're aware of or some issue that's a roadblock or something that we need to be doing that we're not doing. So I know that since our meeting last week, there was a meeting held in Crescent. Brian or Matt, do you want to give an update on some of the topics or the issues?
We were here there. Matt and I were both there and so was John. And pretty much just got the agencies together to talk about what's going on. The roads department talked about a tree dump. Are you getting any trees up there? I'd heard none.
No, we're not. It hasn't really been utilized or we're going to wind that down or do by appointment only or other solutions.
That's I think most people out in the country piled it up and there's, I see fires going, so. They're getting rid of it their own way. They don't have to haul it or nothing. There was other agencies there like the meeting you had a few days before where they offered assistance. Matt, you want to add in on that?
Yeah, so the city of Crescent opened up City Hall, so they do have a bunch of supplies that were all of a sudden dropped off there. And they were looking at getting, how to get rid of some of those things that they had. And Doug from EMA was kind of helping direct them in that fashion to it. All of our, I believe all of our state representatives were there. Representatives from our federal partners were there as well. And then we had just a few, Shalimar from Van Southwest Iowa was there. She came up with some resources for farms. And kind of all that was getting directed towards just to connect with Doug so he could get that information out to individuals. And we know we have a lot of farms up in that northern quadrant that were hit. And I'm trying to think of anybody else that was.
Donna Dossel was there.
Donna Dossel was there. There just because there were some volunteer groups that were there. They'd already signed up to some volunteer groups, some organ, what Doug referred to as organized volunteer groups had come into our area. And they were going around, one of the groups did more just kind of pick up of the yard and help them with items in the house kind of deal. The other group was a group that come in and find them up. They would tear everything down on their lot. They had access to all the equipment and people that they needed to do this to get their lot back to a buildable way to go. And they do this, they do that free of charge to the people. People are allowed to give them a donation at the end of it, once they get paid back from their insurance company if they want to. But there, there's not a requirement for that. And so they had already signed up, I believe she said five homes up in that area had already signed on with them to do that portion of it. But the majority of it, they just kind of circle around to how do they get those supplies out to residents in that area? Because they knew that residents in that area weren't going to come to City Hall and pick up those items. And so I think they were kind of looking for, trying to organize some volunteers to maybe gather up gift bags that they were going to put together and then go drop those off at the affected properties. But that was pretty much my main takeaways of what it was.
A lot of people don't come in. They, I don't know if they're too proud or what, but they just don't want to ask for help. So.
So there's no action item there?
No.
And the tree debris dump? There's no ongoing cost that we need to worry about at this time? At one time, John, you were concerned about it impacting your budget if we had to staff it.
The, the weekends would be an issue, so I think we're going to get out of that business, obviously. And we'll just try to do it by appointment only. So we'll, we'll bring those further down. We're, we're still doing tree pickup ourselves on the county roads out there. So we're still doing like work, I guess.
And you'll communicate with Craig so that he can update the websites and all of the postings as far as the times and availability? All right.
John, are you dumping the county trees down there?
We are.
And your plan is to get with conservation and burn it?
Uh, we can't burn at that location. So yes, we're working on a tub grinder or something else. We also have materials at the rock quarry too that we've hauled there initially, so.
Why can't we burn it there?
It's on the flood plain, so it's told it couldn't burn on the flood plain.
And there's something to do with FEMA also?
It's got a DNR requirement.
FEMA requires you to grind them?
Uh, I think you burn as long as the, get a permit from the DNR. I don't think we're going to get that permit.
All right.
To track and all that. Right.
We, we are.
Yeah.
Are there any other department heads that want to give an update as far as flood recovery? Or not flood? Tornado recovery?
Different year.
We did, for public health, we, we had staff up at that multi-area resource center that they put together in Minden. And we'll have staff at all of the other resource centers that they put together as they moved to Crescent and Traynor area. The public health staff is there just giving people education on what to do if their private well was impacted on there and some cost share funds that we have from the state to help them with either chlorination of the well or well reconstruction of that. And then we also have a nurse that's there onsite as well for tetanus shots of it. If anybody happens to need a tetanus shot, they can get one from our public health department up there. When they, every time that they're doing those multi, you know, they're calling the MARCS, those multi-area resource centers. So we are having staff attend each one of those. And I think the excellent.
The guy get injured on his hand the other day. It killed him. He was right now.
Oh, yeah.
He lived in Crescent and he was helping clean up. He went septic. It's a tough deal. That's a tough deal.
So you want to be, you want to be up on your tetanus vaccine? And they can also, so they're there not only dispensing the tetanus vaccine shots if they need a tetanus shot, but they will also help people look up if they don't know if their tetanus is good right now or not. They can help them find the shot records to show whether it is or not, so.
We will move on to Matt Wyant, Director of Planning and Development. Discussion and/or decision to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-two-four. Resolution waiving temporary occupancy requirements for recreational vehicles for properties with damage from the April twenty-six, twenty-two-four tornado activity. Matt? So, so this is the ability for homeowners to live in their RVs on their properties while their other homes are being rebuilt, correct?
Correct. Currently, the way Potawatomi County zoning ordinance is written, you are not allowed to have an RV or a camper on your property and stay in it for longer than two weeks at a time. So what we would be doing here is waiving that two-week occupancy limit for them because that's been the, the biggest concern that I've heard from the homeowners that have been coming in and talking to us. Thankfully, you know, they've been lucky and they're like, you know, they're either staying with friends or they're staying with families. But they could be up against an eighteen-month, you know, a twelve-month, eighteen-month period of reconstruction for this new thing. So how long does it go, you know, being able to stay? We all know that we're in a housing shortage in Potawatomi County. Our occupancy rates are at all times high and the rental units all across the county. And so we would allow these people then, if they wanted to put a camper on their property, that we get a special use permit from our office. There's not a fee associated with it, but it would give us a site plan to it. It would allow us to go out there and make sure that they're hooked up to their septic system or have a way of disposing of their solid waste. They're coming out of their campers and provide them the education from the DNR on the chemicals obviously used in a camper aren't recommended to go into your normal house septic that you have. And then check their water source for them as well. We could do a water test for them at the source that they're going to drink their water from too. So, and it would allow us tracking. We do this much like we do with permits already. If somebody has an older farmhouse on a property they bought and they're going to build a new house, they will sign an agreement with us that once their new home is completed, then within thirty days they will move out and demo the other structure that's on the property. This is, this is written much the same. You know, once your home has been up and repaired and your occupancy certificate is issued at home, then you basically have thirty days to disconnect the camper from the area that it's in. Because we don't want it to become a permanent thing to where, you know, the next thing you know, it never fails that somebody in the family starts to struggle and have issues. Well, we got this camper, you can just come move in here. Can't do that in Potawatomi County. We don't want to let that start happening. But we want to be able to address the housing needs that we know we're going to be up against on the rebuilding of this event, so.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-two-four.
Saturday.
That's good, we're dealing that, Matt. Thank you.
And you said that there is no fee for that special use permit?
No fee for the special use permit. It's just going to be a tracking method for us and a way to make sure that their sanitary conditions are hooked up and that they have safe drinking water.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion by Shay, the second by Bell to approve resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-two-four. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Wickman?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
And Jorgensen?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Great. Now we move to Mark Shoemaker, Director of Conservation, Jeff Franco, Chief Deputy Conservation and Garfield Coleman, Risk Manager. Discussion and/or decision on Hitchcock Nature Center Lodge Deck improvements.
All right. Go ahead. All right. During inspections late, late fall of twenty-two-three, Risk Manager and Conservation Staff inspected the deck in Hitchcock Nature Center, the railing at Hitchcock Nature Center. Noticed several deficiencies, a lot of those due to just age and weathering. Some of those due to construction practices that were utilized at the time back in two thousand and six, creating some conditions that we felt needed to be rectified. Brought Matt Wyant in to get his opinion as well on the structural integrity of those things. He felt similarly that there were some issues that needed to be addressed. After that, we brought in a structural engineer to do an assessment. He agreed with the findings. He drew up plans to correct a lot of these issues. We did put the project out for bid and we're, I guess, requesting this board to help support that project. Garfield, do you have anything you'd like to add from a safety perspective?
Well, yeah, just like Jeff said, we took a hard look at it back in early, late part of twenty-two-three. And there's significant improvements that need to be done on this, on this deck in the tower to eliminate some of the potential hazards that, that could be associated with it, so.
We had an incident up there. One of the panels came loose.
Yes, we've had some, some boards and some panels that came loose. I call it a near miss, a very near miss. But we, we put some, some temporary things in place to eliminate that, that near miss. But a, a permanent fixture need to be put in place so we don't have any more of those type of near misses.
Matt, is this going to be enough? Are we replacing the whole thing or are we?
My recommendation has been to Jeff and everybody throughout this process that you go for a full replacement on the deck. I believe that everything has an end of life on it. And I said that I feel like that deck has reached its end of life. What we've seen of Hitchcock and the amount of visitors and growth and the kids and everybody that goes up there and enjoys that park, I think that it's deserving of a full replacement for that area. It's just, you know, it's kind of, when you look at county parks, I feel like that's one of our crown jewels. That building and the deck, you see off of it. I mean, a number of people get on it. And to see that, like, so the same thing, that Hawk West shower, I think at the beginning, you know, it was originally built, great thing, lots of volunteers came together. It's just definitely overdue for some major maintenance and upkeep on it. Really, with that close call we had, we can't really put it off much longer, I think.
Are there structural support beams underneath that deck? That's going to be replaced too? All of that's going to be replaced?
The structural columns and beams, the engineer recommended those stay in place. He felt those are structurally sound, so.
They're, they're wood, they're wood beams, right?
So we've got three-inch steel posts that support vertically. And then we have wooden timbers that support underneath as well.
The wood timbers are in good shape still?
Those are in good shape. He felt confident with those.
What was that? Oh, go ahead. What was that low bid again, Jeff? Well, like one forty-eight or something?
Low bid was a hundred and forty-eight.
Oh, I had it.
How, how many bids did you receive?
Three bids. At one forty-eight, seven, seven, seven.
When you said you were looking to see if the, the board would help out with some of it? Are you, are you asking for a hundred and forty-eight, seven, seventy-seven?
Actually, we'd be asking for a little more than that, actually. So a fifteen percent contingency fee with a project like this, something that seems pretty standard and usually is a good thing to do, we'd be asking for a hundred and seventy-five thousand to support the project.
So that was, those bills would then come through Mitch and we'll take care of them through that, this, through the board's budget somehow?
We could, we could do it that way. I mean, I think this was probably one of the ones that we're, since we're coming. Because it kind of depends on when the project's going to start. If it's going to start after the fiscal year, get going right now. But gaming is probably not the only place anybody's budget that it's be available if we needed to get going or get the dump, pay the dump.
Well, one of the things, when we talk about after the fiscal year, Hitchcock, if you go out there now, there's a lot of customers that come out there right now. So the longer we wait, we're pushing a, a higher risk down the road. We're starting to, every time I go out there, I see cars, a lot of kids and a lot of visitors at site. So I hate to, to push it further down the road. And if we potentially have another close, a near miss, and then I, I think we're, what I'm trying to say, I think we need to get this project rolling pretty quick. Well, timeframe doesn't bother me. It's. If not, then we would have to close off a lot of section of that deck. When they can get the material. Right. The deck, deck's going to be composite, right? So you worried all about the, that being slick?
So we currently have.
It's wet.
We currently have composite decking up there right now and it's not an issue. Just be replacing with an updated composite.
When it snows, do we, do we close that?
We do not.
Do we shovel it?
Rangers and staff cleared it off.
Sweet. Okay, last question for you, Mark.
Yep.
The, the current balance in your local option sales tax funds, two-hundred-and-seventeen, is that spoken for?
It is.
All right. I'll make a motion to move forward with the project low bid, one forty-eight, seven, seventy-seven. And we'll pick up. I'll make that one seventy-five, not to exceed one seventy-five, but change orders. You guys need to manage and make sure that's a legitimate cost.
I'll second that. And. How's the material has warranty, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Twenty-five years?
I think it was a thirty-year warranty. It included the warranty information in the pack. It's.
They're installing the commercial grade residential.
Correct. That's right. You did make that clarification.
I think originally, I think the bid is presidential.
They did.
And we had to rebid it for a commercial.
Then you can.
Yeah.
Give rolling on that right away.
What's up?
You'll get rolling on that right away.
As soon as I get the materials out.
Yep.
And you said it was going to be paid out of gaming, is that your motion?
Yeah. I saw the pictures and my understanding that a lot of that decking is not some, not a lot of the decking. Originally, when that was built, it was done by volunteers on, to some point.
It's a good question that I don't have.
Yeah, originally. It was my time.
So, you know, we'll get it properly done this time. Would, did you drive any nails in that, Mark?
No. This was before my time.
That's an old deck.
Yep, thank you.
All right.
It's so much needed for.
Yes.
The area. So a lot of citizens come to Hitchcock, so.
There aren't any day camps or anything planned at that facility this summer, as there.
There, there are a few.
Period.
We're hoping to have this wrapped up if possible prior to those. And if necessary, we'll work with contract on the phasing plans. That can still be, so portions can still be over. A lot of the, a lot of the camps actually take place out in the park anyway. So we'll get them out there.
All right. And we have a motion by Wickman and a second by Shay to approve the Hitchcock Nature Center Lodge Deck improvements, not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand and paid for from gaming. Is there additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Andrew Muggs, Recorder, and Heather Schaefer, Human Resources Assistant. Discussion and/or decision on funding request for Leadership Council Bluffs program participation for county employees.
Good morning. Heather and I are here today on behalf of the What Should Be Committee to request that the board fund up to two county employees' tuition in the Leadership Council Bluffs program a year. The What Should Be Committee has recently begun looking at leadership development and how to foster that with county employees. And we thought utilizing this great existing program would be a good first step. I think the county has quite a few graduates of the program.
We've received good feedback, but up to this point, the, that has been funded through individual departments and their department heads, you know, paying for that as a budget. The What Should Be Committee expressed an interest in ensuring that employees across the county would have that opportunity. So we'll, we'll come at it from a couple different ways. Promotion wise, we'll promote it to department heads and elected officials and ask that they make a recommendation to their employees if they feel like someone might be a good fit for this leadership program. But then we'll also send out employee communication as well that says, hey, the, you know, the board has agreed to fund a couple spots in Leadership CB. Please let your department head know if you're interested in participating in this so that it can be a, a open-ended conversation. Department heads can request an employee participate and employees can also go to their department head and say, hey, I saw this, I'd like to.
So tuition is sixteen hundred dollars per student, I guess. I think the best way to go about it is the board covers the tuition for the first two that apply and get accepted. And after that, it's back on the department to cover that. I think it's unlikely that Leadership Council Bluffs accepts that many people from the county. So I think they like to diversify their classes, so probably only looking at two anyways.
But people do have to apply and get chosen. So that's where, as Andrew said, our, our approach to that would be, we'll just keep it, the board would end up paying for whomever the first two apply and get accepted, so.
You just ask them for three thousand dollars?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Okay.
Well, that would be a year if those applications were accepted.
Go up to, no more than, yeah, they might only accept one of them, so.
And the deadline is June tenth?
Yep. And then the total is the nine-month program running from September through May.
I can tell you that I've been a, a quote, student in that program and it's very worthwhile. Matt Wilbur gives a class on it. He spent time with local governments, both the city and the county. And we're not going to be here forever, so let's get some people through that program.
Yeah, I'll put a plug in for it. I've been on the alumni board for a number of years and former alumni board president for Leadership Council Bluffs. It's a community leadership program more than a leadership development. So it's mostly about trying to expose, hopefully, you know, up and coming community leaders into issues that are facing our community. There's a nonprofit day where we focus on, we've done poverty simulations and we'll go out and take a look at New Visions, Micah House, those types of, you know, sort of, what are the nonprofit needs in the community? There's a healthcare day, they alternate between the hospitals to talk about issues facing our healthcare system. I usually help put together Public Safety Day where we'll have the, police will do a morning program. I'll talk to them over lunch and then the fire department will talk to them over, you know, the afternoon, talk about public safety issues. There's a government day. We've sort of morphed that over the time. Sometimes we go to Des Moines, sometimes we don't. And I think now it's sort of a half and a half. It's like morning, maybe local government and then catch a bus and go to the Capitol and get a chance to talk to our representatives there. There's Education Day, which is usually sort of a mix of elementary, high school and Iowa Western. You know, so I'm sure I'm missing a day in there somewhere. I, I've run the opening retreat for them for probably over a decade. It's a really good program. I mean, I think in terms of just, they try to be, I said, I'd be, I think two is probably optimistic. You'd never have to pay for more than that. I think they generally try to keep it to about one, you know, county employee. It seems like we usually have one county employee, one city employee. There's usually a couple of bankers, there'll be a couple of, you know, maybe somebody from Council of Schools. Iowa West usually sends somebody through. There's usually several nonprofit folks. I know, I've got to know, you know, quite a few through, you know, Heartland Family Service or New Visions, you know, it's usually sending. So it's a very diverse group. So it's very, it's a very, very, very worthwhile program.
So they're still limited to twenty?
Hmm. It's about, I feel like this class is, maybe this current class might be twenty-four. That's about the biggest it's been. I mean, I know during COVID, they called themselves the class half-full, so they go, as, you know, glass half-full. I think there was only like maybe twelve, you know, because they just, because of social distancing had to space out. But it's generally twenty to twenty-four that get admitted. I haven't been on the selection committee for a number of years, but I used to be on that as well. We definitely get more applicants than positions. So, I mean, I'm not going to say it's like hugely competitive to get in, but I mean, it's definitely not everybody that applies gets in.
So county employees that would like to, you know, apply for this program, they, they all apply at the same, or the county chooses which?
Well, that's a good question that you guys can all answer. I mean, I know that the year I applied, I don't know who all applied. I just know I applied and I got in and we funded it from my office's budget. I assume that's probably when Lee went through, probably the same way. If you're going to fund it, I mean, then of course it becomes a question of, are you going to pick winners and losers? Or are you going to just let people apply and then whoever gets in, you fund up to two?
I think the best way is let everybody apply in the first two.
That would be.
To applying and get accepted, the board funds.
My recommendation would be just let employees apply. I don't, you will never be in a position where you have to fund more than two. Because I just, with twenty-four applicants, I mean, twenty-four that get into the class, they are never going to put three county employees in one class. I just cannot imagine that ever happening. So that'd be my recommendation. And it just sort of allows whoever is interested to apply. And then the selection committee makes, they have, they have criteria and they'll try to pick, you know.
I might do it.
From an organizational standpoint, we thought this would be a, a good move to, you know, show that we're, we're behind this program and that it'll be great to always, always, best that we can, have a Potawatomi County employee representing our organization at this leadership program.
Like this year, Maria Fernandez Torres with Public Health is going through. And so, I mean, it's a, you know, I just, it's a really nice program and I've seen a lot of folks go through it. I've stayed, I mean, I volunteer my time and I have for almost twenty years with the group because I just think it's a very, it's a good public service. You meet a lot of, you know, people from diverse backgrounds that maybe I would. I've stayed, I mean, I volunteer my time and I have for almost twenty years with the group because I just think it's a very, it's a good public service, you meet a lot of uh, you know, people from diverse backgrounds that maybe I wouldn't, you know, get a chance to meet. You know, and, and we find that we have, you know, I find ways to, you know, kind of connect the dots between people, I know the year I went through, we were starting a new driver's license reinstatement program for people that were, you know, lost their licenses because they couldn't pay court fines, and at the same time, Heartland Family Service was starting a, they called it Ways to Work, but it was cheap financing for folks that couldn't afford to get cars. And, you know, they had to have LISOE, and we ended up, I connected my driver's license person with the Heartland Family Service person, and so we were able to sort of help, you know, some of those folks, and that's not a connection I would have even known existed, had I not been through that program. So, I think it's a very, it's really good for just giving you a chance to meet people outside your silo.
I believe somebody may have gone through the High Performance Leadership Academy, this would be a completely different, totally different.
Yep, and then there's also, I mean, there's leadership, this, so this is a, is done in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, they're sort of the sponsoring, you know, agency, because the director of the, of local leadership, sorry, I didn't mean to take over your.
No, it's not. You can talk slightly, touch.
So, the, the Chamber has one person that sort of, I mean, they are the, the Director of Leadership Programs, because there's Youth Leadership Council Bluffs, uh, which is for high school juniors, and then there is, you know, adult leadership, and so that one person does, runs both those programs, plus does other work for the Chamber, it's not full-time, you know, work for them. But, you know, so it's really done in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, um, then there's also Leadership Iowa, which I also, I went through about ten years ago, um, and that's different, that's with the uh Iowa Association of Business and Industry as sort of the sponsoring agency for Leadership Iowa, which would be the same type of deal, it's community leadership on more of a state scale. Uh, but yeah, this is totally different, there'll be a little leadership development, I mean, they make people go through, I'm not gonna say like formal personality assessments, but they try to look at how you communicate, what your leadership style would be, and there'll be a little of that. But it's mostly just, I call it issue spotting, it's mostly like what is facing our community, what do we have for housing needs, what are mental health needs, what are education needs? And sort of gives you a chance to, to talk to people that are hopefully local thought leaders in those areas, and you try to figure out, you know, how you might plug in to uh, to helping solve some of those. So, one of the most rewarding groups I've ever been involved in, um, so I'm, I can't speak highly enough about it.
Great.
Do we take it out of the, our budget?
Or is it in the budget for the What Should Be Committee?
Either way.
Do you have a budget?
They would, they do.
What do you do?
They do, so you can either do it out of that budget, otherwise the board itself does have like a training education, all employees mind, that people can use even for like other education and stuff like that. Or reimbursement and that stuff, and that never gets fully used, I think that sits about ten thousand dollars to standard accounts, I think you're probably pretty safe to use that.
Okay, make a motion to approve.
Second, I'll second that.
Thirty-two hundred dollars out of that fund.
Well, the uh, What Should Be Committee has applied a thousand dollars.
Okay, which comes out of gaming, yes.
That's, there's no claims on that, right?
Right. Uh, this year.
Are there any coming?
Not that we know of. So, either way.
That's, it's already been budgeted, right?
Has it?
Out of that five, if we can do that way.
I would do that, the What Should Be Committee budget. Thirty-two hundred dollars. Yeah, thanks for bringing that forward, you guys, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Motion by Shayne, a second by Jorgensen, to approve the, the request for up to two at sixteen hundred each, paid for out of the What Should Be Committee budget. All those in favor?
I'm tied.
Opposed, motion has carried. Thank you very much. Alright, moving to Mitch Kye, Chief Financial Officer, Discussion and or Decision on Policy for Deputy Payouts and Vacation Accruals. And I've asked Mitch to put this together based on conversations that we had um with, we had two new deputies appointed when two retired here recently, and payroll was having concerns about how to pay out and how to set them up, and there was just a little bit of confusion, so we decided maybe a policy would be the best way to do it, because elected officials come and go, but an employee who works here for a long time might agree to move to deputy status at a certain point, and they have an agreement with their elected official, and then that elected official is no longer here when it comes to retirement date, and there's confusion about how things are paid out. So, this is just strictly a policy on if it's this, then it's that sort of scenario, and Mitch, do you want to explain it more?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of the gist of it, you know, we got all the elected officials together, that was probably about a month ago, we had everybody in a room, this was kind of the consensus that we kind of came together. I've heard other feedback from some of them since that meeting as well, so I mean, I think, you know, this, you know, this is a board pay policy of when you guys would intend to pay basically vacation, uh, you know, the intent would be that soon as someone moves to a deputy, you would pay out their accrued vacation, they wouldn't accrue vacation anymore, they would be under the, you know, the guidance of their particularly elected official to tell them how much time they get off, and they would track that themselves, and, and then all of that. Sick leave would stay the exact same as it is now, um, if for some reason they went from deputy back to a non-deputy county employee, they would start accruing vacation again for however many years they've done with the county. But since we have some of the elected officials in here, I'm definitely suggesting you guys take their comment on, on what you guys have going on as well, too.
Are we having an issue with this?
I think sometimes the problem is that one department wants, is, operates that way, they pay out right away, right there, as soon as they get promoted to a deputy position, they think that they're gonna get paid their vacation, and then the other departments are letting it accumulate and then paying it out when they retire, which, you know, actually is gonna be quite higher, you know, much higher rate than what their previous position was. So, like I said, it's really each department's kind of operates independently, no, there's no set policy on how the board handles that and when it should be, so I guess that's up to you to s- to decide if that's something you guys want to have, or if you want to let, let the elected officials continue to just kind of operate.
Can I add to that as well? So, and there has been some discrepancy um in between departments, so um Auditor's Office, Melvin had two deputies, then this was in the past, but one earned vacation and sick time and the other one didn't, they both were first deputies, but they were handled differently within the department. So, I think what we're just looking for is consistency, that way we know what to do when employees do change, when they become a deputy or when they come back, if they're no longer a deputy and they come back into um the employee population, how do we handle that, just that we have it documented? The Sheriff's Office is always a little bit different, too, and will continue to be handled differently because they earn their vacation differently based on their union contract, their vacation is front-loaded to them. So, if I um am um a deputy or a, yeah, if I'm a deputy and then I get promoted to be the chief deputy, my vacation time is paid out, I continue to earn my sick time, but if I go back into, I'm no longer a chief deputy, but I'm a deputy, say I go to be a road deputy or what have you, um, their vacation is front-loaded, so it's not as though they have to continue to earn that, they already get that. So, for that position to pay it out right away definitely makes sense, and that's how we have, there has been inconsistencies over the years with that, but that's how um the sheriff would like to handle that, and that's how we handled um Steve's promotion into chief deputy. So, that is a little bit of a different conversation than this, we feel like that one, we already have that all taken care of. So, this would be the deputies in the other elected officials' offices.
I'd like to hear from the officials.
I don't have any official deputies, so this doesn't affect me, how about it?
I'm not one to be a deputy, but what concerns me is uh is that if the, uh, the next auditor decides that, or if I decide that uh that she should not be a deputy, and she hasn't been accruing any vacation, she has to then start accruing vacation at that time, and if that person's been here for fifteen years and is no longer deputy, they've got to spend a year uh earning vacation time, there's nothing on the books for their vacation, and it seems like uh um that would be a disincentive. Or, you know, or a, a long-term employee that started over as if they were a new employee, earning vacation.
So, like if you were voted out of office?
Well, and that, that, or if I retired, you know, and the next auditor says, okay, we're, we don't want any deputies, and then the deputy I have doesn't have any vacation on the books from that day one, and they're gonna have to earn it throughout the year to get any vacation. Now, this new person we just hired in uh the, and uh in real estate, he doesn't have any vacation on the books, he's earning it as he's working, but that uh seems like uh not right to me, anyway. And then uh, if you're worried about paying somebody out on their retirement at their deputy rate, when they become a deputy, maybe they should be paid out for uh vacation, if you do do this, they should be paid out, could be paid out at that previous rate, which was a lower dollar amount, say they were making twenty-five dollars an hour, became a deputy, and now they're making thirty-five dollars an hour, when they retire, don't pay them out at thirty-five, pay them out at twenty-five.
I don't know if the system can accommodate, I don't think Tyler can accommodate that, and I also, we would have to track, because if you, if you earn them at twenty-five dollars an hour, right, and then stop, now you had a position change and you're making thirty-five dollars an hour, we would definitely need to pay you for the time that you earned at thirty-five, so we would need a system that could keep track of, these were the dates when you earned it, this is what you got paid, this is what your hourly rate was at that time. Today, Tyler can't do that, or it doesn't do that, so that would be very, very complicated um to keep track of that.
But uh previously, I'd had, I had, when I had two deputies, I treated them different because their jobs were different, and for me, Lee's uh jobs, uh employees.
They're different, but we're all in one office, so we all do what, listen.
Right, well, then you can handle it the way you want, and Andrew's uh staff can handle it the way I want, or he wants, and uh, but.
Yeah, we're all, we're all in close together, right? He does his, I do mine, I just feel like my deputy has been there for twelve years, you know, and it, and we've been doing this for forty-seven years the same way, why are we all of a sudden? You know, I understand the Sheriff's Department, that's a complete different realm of, you know, they can go back on the road or they can go back in a different position. When you have, like our offices, you know, somebody else could come in here and they can choose whoever they want, well, they could put our, the deputy that we have, they could put that in a position in the office, you know, whether they do or not, and if you take all their time away, then like Melvin says, you know, they're gonna start over from scratch.
Yeah, I just sent you a permit.
But you're gonna pay out sick time anyway at the, at the higher rate, I'm assuming.
Yes.
When they retire, which is half of it, you know, I'm sure, and vacation isn't as much as if they're maxed out on their sick time.
I think we just are looking for it to be consistent, because it, it wasn't an issue only with the Sheriff's Office, Melvin, when you had one of your deputies retire, and we were trying to figure out how do we fill this position, what's it going to be, is it going to be a manager, is it going to be a coordinator, is it gonna be another deputy, and then there was a lot of conversation about what that person wanted, they wanted to keep their vacation time, but that position that you were looking to put them in did not earn vacation, so there was inconsistency, and we didn't know what to do. So, the point really is, yeah, we wanted to work for the employees, we wanted to work for the departments, but we want it to be consistent and documented, so we don't have questions. So, either way, we just don't want to have questions. You and I did, we could talk about it offline, yeah.
Well, we were, we had discussions on how we wanted to handle that position, but it was, and we did it the way we wanted to.
We. Andrew, I'd like to hear.
We can talk about it.
I think I can get on board with either way, like it doesn't, I think I can figure it out either way, I do have a couple concerns about the policy. Like Melvin said, if someone goes back down to a regular employee, that, it's not fair to start them at zero for vacation. Um, and then my other bigger concern was, it's like, one of the bigger benefits of being a county employee is that payout when you retire. So, someone can be making more money than you do as a deputy, and they retire, and they get all their vacation paid out, but you as a deputy, simply because you're a deputy, you don't get that benefit. That was my bigger concern.
Hey, my, my next question is, when you promote someone to a deputy?
Yeah.
They've procured vacation.
Correct.
Can they not take that vacation at that time?
They would get it at that current, at their previous rate, not at the deputy rate.
I'm saying, they could take a vacation at that time.
Correct, but.
Instead of paying them out.
I'm not gonna, if they have two hundred hours on the books, I'm not gonna let them take that much time off.
Two hundred hours come back and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so let me get this straight, okay, if you're, if you're as, working as employee, then you get promoted or take a job as a deputy, you have accumulated, as, as an employee, you have accumulated so much vacation time or sick leave or whatever, then once you become a deputy, you lose all of that immediately?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Why not that first year, because then as a deputy, you were starting to accumulate vacation?
No.
You're not.
Not necessarily, that's, although again, what we're trying to figure out, it sounds like maybe the consensus, and I don't want to speak for everybody, is that treat a deputy, once you become a deputy, the same as the regular employee, they follow the employee handbook for the same vacation and sick time.
Right. That's my.
And we're, I, I mean, yeah, Mitch and I are fine with that, as long as everybody's, yes, thank you, as long as everybody's gonna do that, if you have multiple deputies or you have multiple deputies, or Andrew has multiple deputies, as long as they're all the same, that way payroll knows what to do.
They're still using sick, they're still using vacation, they're using it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see, I, you know, I, somebody's worked here for twenty years and whatever, you know, as an employee, gets promoted to a deputy, I don't see those twenty years going by by. I, I don't want to see that happen, I want to see them benefit from their, them, those twenty years, you know, even in, even as they are being promoted. So, that's, you know, that's kind of what I'd like to see happen, and this, this would be the way to do that, they just, they just continue on with.
And to Lee's point, it's not as though your vacation time is frozen and you cash it out when you retire, but you're using it just like normal. If you take a week vacation to South Dakota, you use a week of vacation times, because as elected officials, right, if you are an employee and you get voted into being elected official, you no longer earn time, so you come and go as you need to, and we cash it out right then and there so that there's no questions, because that had, you know, over the past couple of years, we've had some leadership changes with elected officials, and that came into question, and that's how we handle it now. So, we were looking at their deputies, do we want to handle it the same way as elected officials, or do we want to handle it the same way as employees in the employee handbook? Sounds like employees in the employee handbook.
Well, sir, just maybe for the benefit of people listening that don't know how the system goes, like I've been county attorney twenty-two years, I have zero accrued hours of vacation, I have zero accrued hours of sick, because I don't get those as elected official. That said, I can take as much as I want, and if I take too much, then I get myself unelected, right, I mean, that's, that's sort of the way that, you know, that works. Um, and so, some offices have been treating their employees like all other employees, some have been, I mean, their deputies, some have been treating their deputies like they are basically junior elected officials, where they have unlimited sick and vacation, but they also don't accrue any sick and vacation, so we, you know, when they get out, so there will be no payout whenever I'm done being a county attorney, because I don't, you know, as elected official, I don't accrue those. But I have not had any official deputies in my office, so my two attorney threes, they're just regular employees as far as the handbook goes, and they accrue that just like anybody else.
I talked to Audrey, who's been here for over forty years, she said that one time, there were three deputies in the auditor's office, and they, and, and the code allows it, they could come and go as they please, they didn't.
That was in nineteen seventy-seven.
Yeah, I mean.
That's a long time ago.
It was a long time ago, things have changed since then, but.
Long time ago, I was here.
But that was, that. Yeah, well, uh, yeah, um, Lee's probably got more history than.
Yeah, I got all the history.
Yeah, so that's the way it was handled, and, and I don't know how Judy or her predecessor handled it down there, but that's the way Doug Premird handled it back in nineteen seventies or.
Harvey.
Oh, okay.
Has there ever been a deputy hired off the street, I mean, they come in day one as a deputy, and they have, they have nothing accrued as a, a county employee from before, and does that ever happen?
John Sortino hired George Farage off the street when he came in as reporter, but it doesn't happen too often.
Okay, but.
He deputized right away?
Yeah, he wasn't in the office prior.
There would, there would be nothing wrong with allowing them to accumulate their own vacation time, sick leave, all of that.
We'd have to track it ourselves, I guess.
Well, no, it could be Tyler. Gonna help us, yeah, I ask personally for my own.
Tyler.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll help us.
Yeah.
It sounds like the consensus is that we want to treat them.
Just like a regular employee.
I think that's the easiest and. I think that's the easiest and it's the most fair.
Right.
And we do it all across the board for everybody.
Yeah, except for the sheriff. Yes, except for-
Sheriff's a different deal.
Yep, that's a different deal. That would be great, and we'll just update the employee handbook to reflect that. Um if everybody's okay with that. And one one other quick caveat to that um is that comp time, we need to get that cleaned up. So if you are in a um deputy position, that is a according to Iowa code, is is a leadership position. They they are to fill in when you're not here. So it should be an exempt position. The pay that they the pay rate that they get meets the exemption criteria for Department of Labor. So they should not earn overtime, and they should not earn comp time. We have some deputies that have time on the books. We need to clean that up, and there should be no more earning of comp time and overtime.
That should be another agenda item.
No, be well, maybe, or we discuss it now.
We can discuss it, but we can't move on that, correct? It's not on the agenda.
It's not-
I think it's it's close. I mean, you're talking about deputy payouts and vacation accruals. I mean, I think it's germane to the item, what's on the agenda. So I mean, I'm gonna say you have to deal with it today. I think you have the authority to deal with it today. It's it's germane to the item that's on the agenda, right?
I think they are treated as exempt employees, except some earn comp time and others don't. And and exempt employees not eligible to earn overtime and or comp time according to the Department of Labor. So again, that's one of those practices that we need to get consistent, and we need to document it. My recommendation would be, as exempt employees, they should not earn overtime or comp time. And we should we should pay that out now to get that cleaned off the books. Because if you have comp time sitting on the books, Department of Labor is gonna come in and say, if you have comp time sitting on the books, you look like you're a non-exempt employee.
Man, I just promoted Kathy, and when she promoted, I paid out her comp time to get it off the books. She'll no longer accrue comp time, so.
Okay. And you're good with that, Lee?
I'm very good with that.
I'm 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 all I have none of my attorneys get comp time, so they're all exempt.
Melvin? What's your opinion there?
Well, I suppose if a deputy is not getting comp time, but they're still uh working for an officer who's says, yeah, well, yeah, you need some time off, you don't have any comp time on the books, but you can take extra vacation time. Or you can flex, or you know, within that two-week period, you can still flex your times, you know.
Absolutely.
It's there's that flexibility and ability still there.
It's up to each individual.
Right.
Elected official.
For the sheriff, because they're special.
There too.
I I guess I-
It is twenty-four-seven operation, sorry.
I I would still expect to have a guidance document, maybe not a policy, but a guidance document that Lee could take to any of her employees and say, hey, I would like you to become a deputy, and these will be your additional responsibilities. And the employee will think, what am I giving up? What am I getting? And it would be a specific fact sheet to explain, if you are deputized, this what this changes. And then if you decide three years down the road, you no longer want to be that deputy, that things have changed, then you have another fact sheet that says, okay, I'm converting from a deputy back to a regular employee. What am I giving up? What am I getting? Just so it's the same regardless of the election year or who's in charge, it's just a fact sheet. So the employees know what's going on.
What might be challenging about that is that an election year could impact that. If um if if you are a deputy, there may not be a position for you to return back to. So let's just-
Not like the sheriff's.
Not like the sheriff's, right. So I'm just gonna pick on Lee. So for Lee, let's say Lee has all of her treasurer clerk positions filled. And Lee decides not to run, and someone else runs, and they choose that they're only gonna keep one of Lee's deputies. If her positions are all full, where does that other deputy go to? We would have to come to the board and ask for another FTE, and you might approve it, but if budgets are tough, there there might not be a position for that person to go back into. So they might be out of a job, and that that is one of the risks of it.
And that should go on that fact sheet.
Yeah, that's a sure. Okay, so that could go on the fact sheet saying that you may or may not have a a job if if you have spot open.
Understandable now, most of the deputies, they know that, you know, they might not be reappointed. I mean, that's not a that's that that-
I think the Iowa code spells out the responsibilities of a deputy, and if we just follow the employee handbook for everything else, then
Yeah.
I think that kind of covers it.
If the deputies are are valued employees, so if something like that were to happen, well, you just de-deputize somebody and make them a regular employee, so their job doesn't go away if if something changes.
Well, you have to have a job for them to go into. If Lee doesn't have a
Their phone.
Spot at the front desk for them. I mean, I I know that's simplifying it.
That's up to the elected official when, say, someone else comes in here, that they're going to let that person, that deputy, go into a position.
Lee, would you let last hired go? Would that be an option?
I don't know if that's something-
You should still get the same amount of employees, whether they're a deputy or not.
Not necessarily.
Because they might bring someone in off the street.
To to Melvin's-
That's true.
Right, you can pick anybody to be your deputy. You can bring somebody off the street like John did years ago, you know, you don't have to pick in-house.
And to Melvin's point, so the Iowa code does spell out, what Andrew said, does spell out what the duties of a deputy should be. A a deputy is not necessarily someone who's doing the regular, a job that already exists. They're doing a little bit more leadership responsibilities, filling in when you're not in, filling in when Lee's in. If Lee has to have an extended illness absence or something, the office keeps going, that person is is filling in for a leadership position. I think, and maybe this again is a conversation we should have offline, yours is a little bit different in how yours is functioning. I I don't know that it's functioning as the Iowa code indicates that that deputy position should be functioning. So there there may or may not be a spot for them to go back to, I think, is is what we're saying. It just depends on the elected official um and what the budget looks like as well.
These are gonna be very limited exceptions, one of them.
I would think so.
Okay, because we're looking for a general rule, general.
We're try, yes, we are trying our best to put in some general rules and and consistent practices, so that there are as few exceptions as possible, just so that there's no questions, and we don't wanna necessarily treat people differently.
Okay, I'll make a motion to uh deny the um policy deputy payouts, vacation accruals, and send it back to um Janet and the policy team for review.
Put it on paper.
We'll put it in-
On paper, and then we can vote on what we just all discussed.
We'll put it in the employee handbook policy. We'll put the words, the deputies, this is for employees and deputies, and then that will come back to the board.
I'll second that.
You also eliminating the uh the whatever pay needs to be paid out.
Comp time?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't believe that that's something that you that you necessarily need to vote on because they're exempt employees, so they shouldn't be earning comp time anyway.
I'm all for eliminating that.
That sounds great.
So how are you gonna do that, Jen? If there's some out there that that are?
I will work with, I believe that there's only one. I will work with that elected official, and we'll get that paid out on the next pay period. Which won't be this one, because we're getting paid this Friday, but we're already into Tuesday, so it'll be the next-
So you work with the elected officials on this?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, and the motion was to repeat again?
I I deny it.
Can you see?
I don't even know if we need to make a motion. I think we just forget about it.
Table it?
Yeah.
And have her come back.
I think Janet's gonna work on it, put it in the employee handbook, what we're going to-
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Does the chairman concur that you would just postpone that till later day?
Yes. They are still tabling this item for additional review. Thank you all for your input.
That was good discussion. Thank you. Thanks for coming up, Lee and Andrew. Really appreciate that, Melvin, in case that helps.
Right.
All right. Melman Hauser, auditor, and Linda Swolly, first deputy auditor's office, discussion and or decision on assessment for-
What about C? Oh, that I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I marked it in the other one. Sorry.
Linda was just wanting to know if you were going to assess for Nobles Lake as uh Nobles Lake and C and R levy trustees, were you going to assess? You needed to get something. They've been calling all the other drainage districts, see if they're gonna do any assessments. Was there any-
Nobles Lake?
Nobles Lake or C and R?
Linda here today.
Yeah, you want her to come in?
Well, um are you familiar with it?
Uh enough that there is money in, there's money in the Nobles Lake. Uh she checked with Heather, there's no money in Nobles Lake account, eleven thousand. Uh the C and R, there's only fifty cents in there, but it's all getting paid from uh one of the FEMA buckets, you know, for any instruction that they're doing there. But if you want to assess, she'd like to know that.
Is there is there any assessment on the South Noble District right now?
I don't know that one.
All right.
Well, there would have been whatever we assessed last year.
Yeah, there's probably some warrants out, but there's eleven thousand dollars in Noble Lake. Now, I don't know, you're the trustees, I don't know. I'm where she just clerked.
I can't remember, did we do zero last year, or did we do two hundred percent, or?
And we can, I can have her come in, and if you wanna pursue some, I just put this on there. If we wanna make a decision, we can put that on next week, if you wanna find out some more information.
Well, if if South Noble has eleven thousand dollars to it, no warrants out there, we should not be levying anything.
Well, I would agree.
And you're right, C and R's in its early development stage. Everything's being paid for FEMA dollars and state funds.
But you hadn't heard anything from the landowners up there on any any-
No, I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Well, when you levy for the C and R's for maintenance and um and that kind of thing, and it's not even built yet.
Right, right, and that's all-
We shouldn't be levying anything there either.
Right.
Oh, and we aren't, are we?
On C and R? No, all that money's coming from uh FEMA or state FEMA or um and we used a bunch of that money, there was two buckets of money, right? And we used the first bucket last, it was a had a timeline on it, we had to use it by the end of June last year. And now there's just another bucket of money that has uh they're working on it, and those claims will be paid uh by the state.
All right, so the C and R is completely out of the question. South Noble has money, so um you want some kind of a uh-
She just wanted some documentation to know that.
Decision today, I will I would make a decision that we do not assess the South Noble District.
I I will second that.
But I would like to know if we're assessing it right now. You get that to us, Melvin?
Yeah, I'll let Linda let you know later. What's uh assessments are out?
They're up there working on that levy now.
Do you have any issues with that, Scott?
No.
All right, so the motion is motion by Wickman and second by Shay.
Thing is uh-
No, go right ahead.
Uh we probably should have um John run in on that. Engineering Al could tell us what looks like.
You get an update on C and R?
Well, on on both of them, there's any potential needs for any type of maintenance or something on those, so.
What what's the what's the timeframe on this, Melvin?
Well, she just wants, that's what they're doing right now, is checking with all the drainage districts, but if there's anything they need to, they're gonna assess anymore.
You wanna hold up on it, Scott?
No, I I just, we we still need to get that from from him, so we know going forward what the like the operations manual is for for those, or we're gonna have him inspect them once a year and tell us what the-
That's that was the plan, right?
Yeah. So I don't know when the best time for him to come in and do that is.
It was inspected by
Well, he's been up there this whole-
Sun quest. About, remember when we we changed that? So it was inspected by them because we got a bill for that, and that's probably been six months ago. So we're probably due for another inspection in October, November sometime.
Yeah, I don't know when the best time.
And then, you know-
We'd know if we needed assessment that it-
Yeah, we would.
Yeah, we wouldn't go assess again until next year.
But that would be okay, right?
That'd be a a year from July first.
But you always- Like Brad-
You always wanna keep some money in the in that fund for, you know, I don't know, small maintenance repairs, mowing, and maybe some tree removal if that comes out.
They need the assessment to do the taxes, right?
Right, yeah, and Lee wants them by the end of May, so that's what she's working on.
She wants them by the, Lee wants them by when?
Lee need wants all those assessments by the end of May.
See, so-
Should we bring John in here?
So next.
John.
Rosen?
Oh, I don't know that she need him, but she just needs to know if you're gonna do something, she needs to get that in the-
He'd be the one to-
She'd need to get those parcels assessed.
Tell us if we need to.
Well, after a after a uh an inspection, if you're doing an inspection this fall, we'll say, yeah, you need to do this or that, but uh
Okay.
Unless uh some of the landowners will, you know, let you know that there's an issue, then you can, I'd be and if you got eleven thousand dollars there, you can, you know, get a contractor to go do some mowing or tree removal around the summer.
Yeah, we haven't heard from any of them, I don't think.
I'm okay with my motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so a motion by Wickman and a second by Shay for no additional assessments on the South Nobles Drainage District. Did I say that right?
At this time.
At this time. Do we need to include C and R in that as well? We're not adding any assessments for it. Nor are we charging any, but just leave it out of the motion, not act on it.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the motion.
It shouldn't need to work if it's gonna be brand new, but
Hopefully they get it done this year.
They're they're rocking and rolling on there. I've been up there a couple times. Okay.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
opposed, motion has carried. Thank you, Melvin. Okay, many appointments from last week. I attended the What Should Be Committee, and that was, we're looking for not only leadership op, looking for additional leadership opportunities for our employees besides what we've already talked about today. Um I have a couple of proclamations that came in late, so they did not get on the agenda. One is a proclamation for National Corrections Week, which is May fifth through the twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And this is to recognize the correctional officers that are trained in law enforcement, um dedicated to maintaining safe and secure correctional facilities and our jail services. So I won't be reading the proclamation, I just wanted everyone to know, the Sheriff's Office has published something on their website, and they are pushing out the information. Um I also have a proclamation that it's National Nurses Week from May sixth to twelfth to twenty twenty-four. And it's this recognizing the that the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, including the frontline of the pandemic and all other health concerns. And we we need the department heads to bring the proclamations to us ahead of time, so that we can get them on the agenda, because they're important. But these are just kind of being promoted in their own ways this week.
Thank you, Susan.
Um we have, the board has received invitations for a June eleventh ribbon cutting for the interstate system in Council Bluffs. That meeting is for that ribbon cutting's at ten thirty a.m., which is during our regular scheduled meeting time. And I am going to propose that we do not have a Board of Supervisors meeting on June eleventh. We will send out a notice to all the department heads, so that we can adjust the agendas accordingly for the month of June with year-end coming up, just to make sure there aren't any- with year-end coming up, just to make sure there aren't any year-end things that might fall through the cracks. Um, we reviewed the agendas from last year, and there didn't seem to be anything, um, that couldn't be moved around. So just plan on not having a meeting on June eleventh.
So that's at ten thirty, you said?
Yes, so that the board can attend the ribbon cutting.
Whoa.
You got an invitation in your mailbox.
Oh, you'll have to check with the auditor, because there'll have to be a canvass of the primary. And I don't know what day that's gonna be, but we don't, we can't get out of that, that's.
So that's true.
Still do it in the afternoon, although, uh, your calendar's, you don't spend over. June fourth, you're right. We may be, we could probably do it on Monday.
June tenth.
We could do it on June tenth. I think we have the option of doing it on Monday or Tuesday after that election. We can check on that and let you know. And then run around it.
We, we have time to adjust. Okay. All right, other committees. Brian?
He's, uh, looking for a new tower for the northeast corner of Hot County from Crescent on up. I'm working on that. Um, the, the Crescent meeting with all the departments or the tornado damage, I was at that. We were at a drainage meeting. Um, trying to figure all the drainage out for Pigeon Creek District. I've done a couple others of work committees.
Are they still planning on, uh, resuming their public hearing in the Pigeon Creek?
Yes, they are, but they're planting right now, every one of them. And there's some, there's some changes they're doing, so.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah. You went to Macedonia?
Pardon?
You went to Macedonia Sunday.
They'll be on that Pigeon Creek too?
No, I just think you can update that, uh.
Oh.
That you missed a really good, uh, time Sunday, that was.
Oh, the, uh.
The, the ballgame.
The ballgame of Macedonia Sunday evening.
And, and your Stacy Kenny was all over the fans taking pictures and, and, uh, it was really. I don't, I'm not a baseball fan, but it was really cool.
There was a huge turnout there. They were doing pictures for a mural on some building, a building in Macedonia. And it was a good fundraiser for them, and a lot of fun, a lot of people showed up there, so. It was a nice deal.
Jeff?
Well, I didn't have anything, uh, as far as, uh, organizational committees, uh, but I certainly took a tour of the damage done by the tornadoes. God help those people. Um, but also up in Crescent, um, you know, it's the town itself that didn't receive a, any damage. Uh, but certainly you take a tour of the county roads and stuff around Crescent, a lot of damage out there too, so, so. Something that, uh, it's heartbreaking, those families, those families, uh, to have a deal with that, we're surely there, we're there to help them, we'll be there to help.
That?
Just that, uh, well, when we did our committee updates, was the map, I'm reading it.
Kim? All right, we will now move to public comments. Anybody signed up for public?
Anybody signed up?
Did you want to sign up? No, okay.
All right, that's it, I'll make a motion to go into closed session, going to Iowa Code twenty-one point five, during, during day. For discussion and our decision on the purchase of real estate. Of real estate.